Good evening, and I hope you felt welcomed this evening by our Public Works Director, Shawn Finley, and our Planning Director, Stephen Spraker. They served as our greeters tonight. It's February 16th, 2021. This is the second regular meeting of the Ormond Beach City Commission. We are socially distanced in commission chambers, and it's seven o'clock now. I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you, to my right, your left, Reporting Secretary Cassidy Ritz, City Attorney Randy Hayes, our Commissioner from Zone 1 Dwight Selby.
Good evening.
Our Commissioner from Zone 2 Troy Kent.
Evening, everybody.
And to my left, your right, our Deputy Mayor and Zone 3 Commissioner Susan Persis.
Hello, everyone.
Our Zone 4 Commissioner, Rob Littleton. We have both our Police and Fire Chief way to my left, up against the wall there, Richard Severs, and Jesse Godfrey. Down in front, we have City Manager Joyce Shanahan, Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley, and our City Clerk Colby Salento. At this time, if you would, please silence your cell phones, and we're happy to have Chaplain Sam Mercado from Advent Health here to present the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Almighty God, we gather here today to make decisions for our community. May we use our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us. May we act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. And we ask your blessing and guidance on our city leaders as they make these decisions in behalf of our community. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have our annual audit presentation, and I will recognize Zach Shalifor from James Moore &amp; Company.
All right. Good evening, Zach Shalifor, Partner James Moore &amp; Company. It's great to see everyone here in person. You know, don't get out too much these days, lots of Zoom calls and everything else, so it's great to be here in person with you all tonight. So we are here to go over the annual audit for the September 30th, 2020 fiscal year. As always, we'd like to thank the Commission for the continued opportunity to work with the city. A big thank you to staff, Kelly, Chris, and the rest of the team in finance. Just a very challenging, difficult year from a logistics standpoint. We tried to do as much of the audit remotely this year, just to help everybody maintain as much distancing as possible, but we were able to still be wrapped up for this usual second meeting here in February. As always, the city has prepared a CAFER, or a Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and the city did receive the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting on the 2019 CAFER. We expect to see the same on this year's CAFER. And what that means is, in putting together this hundred-some-odd-page document, there's a handful of additional work that staff goes through to help compile 10 years of financial history, as well as a lot of non-financial history. So while the majority does follow the finance, there's plenty of efforts from departments across the city to help compile all of that data that's in this report. So while these are management's financial statements, there's five reports that we issue as part of performing the audit. The first is the audit report on the financial statements themselves, and here we did issue an unmodified opinion that your financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. This is the best opinion that we can issue, and effectively means that the numbers can be relied upon. The second report that we issued this year is because the city spent more than $750,000 of federal grant funds, we performed what's called a single audit, basically a mini-compliance audit over your major grant programs. This year, you had, there were some FEMA expenditures that showed up, just based on the timing. FEMA has their own rules where we recognize those, once those expenses are obligated. And also, there was about $1.5 million that was passed through from Volusia County related to the CARES Act funding. So that was what the focus of that testing was on this year, and we had no findings to report there. We also look at the internal control over financial reporting and any compliance areas, such as budget, grants, and debt. If we had any deficiencies in controls or noncompliance, we would report those in this third report, and there were no such items to be reported there this year. The fourth item required by the Florida Auditor General requires us to look at a series of items related primarily to financial condition. If there were any really negative metrics hit, we would be required to disclose those. There were no such issues, as we'll get to in a moment. The city continues to be in a very strong position financially. And then the last report in the CAFER is, we do have to look at the city's compliance with state statutes over investments and investment policy activity, and we did note here that the city was in compliance of those specified statutes. The one reporting change this year, it's not in the CAFER, still the same usual document, but due to some state statute changes about a year and a half ago, we were required to perform and issue a separate audit related to the downtown CRA this year. The Ormond Crossing CRA was below the threshold that we have to look at, but there was a separate report there issued. Basically, the same reports included no findings there, and that also does include an additional compliance report where we had to look at the use of those CRA dollars to ensure that they were in compliance with the CRA plan and CRA statutes as well. So look at the general fund, take a quick, high-level view of the numbers. Your total fund balance or reserves is about $12.7 million in the general fund. The bulk of that in these different categories shows up as assigned and unassigned fund balance. Those are really your unrestricted available reserves. The reason there's not much of that restricted category, where you have external restrictions over the use of funds, is those are all tracked already in special revenue funds to have better transparency and accountability over the use of those dollars. But looking at those total reserves making up the 12 million, what we look at here really is to say, okay, how does that relate to your annual budget? The city, of course, has a minimum fund balance policy, 15% looking at your unassigned balance there relative to the budget, and then there's some other metrics that we look at as recommended by the GFOA, slightly different. And the bottom line here, the city was in compliance with all of those minimum recommendations, maybe a little bit closer to that 20% range, or a little bit higher, but ultimately, that's a good thing. It is a bare minimum recommendation when we look at those numbers, but the city continues to be in a strong financial position. And the biggest factor, as we look at the past year and going forward, has really been COVID-19, and what's that impact going to be. I'm sure during the budget process last year, there were plenty of discussions where Kelly said, we don't know how much revenues might go down, and it was kind of daunting for a while, just looking and trying to say, what will this new year look like? And the good news is that I think really the 2020 impact wasn't as bad as we expected, and so far in 2021, sales taxes and other revenues that do make up a pretty substantial portion of the city's budget continue to be pretty consistent with the prior year. We haven't seen any major hits. So as long as the progress out of the pandemic continues on the upswing, like it hopefully is now with vaccine progress and so forth, hopefully, we won't see any major impact there financially. And then, of course, property values continue to be very strong. So coming out of the pandemic, ultimately, I think the city is as strong as it's ever been. So compared to what the uncertainty and question marks looked like nine, 10 months ago, you all are definitely in a very strong spot here today. And then lastly, I always do like to touch upon the pension funds and just note that there are these significant liabilities shown in the financial statements. The net pension liability, or the unfunded liability, is a little bit under $25 million this year. I like to highlight that that's not a number that will become due and payable. It's ultimately an actuarial estimate to say, at this point in time, here's what that number looks like. But what really matters with regard to the pensions is that you all proactively monitor and really handle things the right way in terms of funding the plans as you go forward, and making sure that the benefits are sustainable in those plans. There's, of course, been changes made over the years to help with that sustainability. But what I do want to highlight here is, looking at those funded percentages at the bottom, except for Police, which is just under 80%, almost all three plans are over 80% for probably the first time in a long, long time. There's no, here's what it needs to be, but lots of actuaries I've heard say 80% is kind of a rule of thumb to say this plan is, you know, well enough funded. It's a healthy plan at that point in time. The other kicker I do want to highlight is, one of the biggest assumptions that drives this liability and drives what amount of money the city has to contribute to those plans relates to the discount rate, or what the long-term investment returns on those pension plan assets will be. And the city continues to be making sure those rates are really as conservative as possible. So what that means is that you're ultimately being proactive to ensure that those plans are well-funded now, versus maybe assuming an excessively high rate of return, and kind of having to worry about maybe funding more later. So the city's continued to be ultimately one of the most proactive I've seen in ensuring that those rates are kind of on the more conservative end. Across the three plans, you have two at 6.75%, one at 7%, and the Florida retirement system this year moves down to 6.8%. Just in general, there's not many city plans that assume a return of less than 7%. So while the numbers continue to look better, I do want to highlight that the overall situation is even that much more favorable to the city because of those steps that have been taken to ensure that you all are funding as appropriately as possible, and having those conservative recommendations to ensure that you're putting in enough money now to help fund that, those plans over the long term. So with that, that covers everything that I have. I'm, of course, more than glad to answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you, Zach. Any questions from the Commission?
Just comments?
All right, and comments. Commissioner Kent?
So our auditor said the city is as strong as it has ever been financially, and I just remind Ormond Beach, and we also gave our residents a tax decrease this year. Our financial house is in order. Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Persis?
Yes, I just want to thank Kelly McGuire and Chris Biles for all their hard work. We are in great, a great financial position, really, because of you and your hard work. And, you know, you're clearly good at your jobs, and we really appreciate you. It's not easy to, you know, keep all these numbers accurate, and it's sure easy to make a mistake when you're doing it, and you don't, and I just want to commend you for that. So thank you so much for making us look the best.
Good deal. Thank you, Zach. I appreciate, appreciate your presentation. It was a good report this year. Obviously, we work hard to keep our fiscal house in order. Being financially responsible to our taxpayers, our residents, is a priority for us, and I think that shows. Kelly and her award-winning, Chris, her award-winning team there in finance with Joyce's supervision, with her financial management background, really keep us on track year after year. I mean, nothing works if the bills aren't getting paid, and so being in the strongest financial shape we've ever been in is, is great to hear. I was curious, after we talked, I guess it was yesterday, what the Florida retirement system's funding rate was for their pensions, and they're at, I think, 84%. Back in 2008, they were at 105%. And so that fluctuates, obviously, like you said, year to year with the markets. I don't know what, what their discount rate is. I'd be curious to, you know, find that out, but it's a, it's a complex issue, but seeing us at 80% or above in almost every category is a great place to be, and so I'm, I'm proud of that. And that's really all the, all the additional comments. I didn't have any questions. Thank you for that presentation.
All right. Thank you. Good seeing everyone.
You as well. Audience remarks tonight, and we'll start with Jim Cameron.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Jim Cameron, Senior Vice President, Government Relations, Daytona Regional Chamber. And I believe, Colby, I mean, they, hopefully, just they gave you all my little flyer here. I just wanted to make you all aware of our, what's called Volusia, Volusia Days at the Capitol, but this year, it's going to be virtual Volusia Days at the Capitol, because pretty much everything we've heard up there, I mean, just with the COVID situation and all like that, though, the Capitol's pretty much locked up tight. It's very difficult, I mean, to see legislators face-to-face for safety reasons and stuff, and we can understand and appreciate that. But, so what we're doing this year, it's just like we've scheduled it before. It's a two-day event, and then the first day, March 16th, we're going to be having 30-minute segments, different speakers like we've had before, and we're probably going to add one or two more on, on this list that we've got there. But we're going to have, like I say, Transportation Secretary, the Executive Director for Housing Finance Corporation, talking about affordable housing, and Visit Florida, and Department of Economic Opportunity, and Enterprise Florida, and the State Insurance Commissioner, and also the CEO for Florida Hospital Association, talking about healthcare matters. And then the next day, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon, we're going to be online with our Volusia delegation members and a couple of other key legislators, though. But what I'm saying is this, is that not that you have to listen the whole thing for four hours or so, but it's going to be in 30-minute segments. You get a link. You pick and choose the people that you want to listen in on, and you can type in questions and all, and ask questions and such. So it's still going to be conversing with them, but as I said, you just, if you want to listen to like two or three speakers the first day, and one or two speakers the next day, you can do it that way, on your own schedule, from your own desk. So it's a little bit different this year, and so we just wanted to make you aware of it then. If you've got anybody on staff and stuff, please make them aware. If they have any questions, though, have them call my cellphone. It's listed on there at the bottom of the sheet, but yeah, we'd like to have you all, have you all's participation, if we could.
Thank you, Jim. Okay. As far as Jim, on Wednesday, March 17th, are you going to firm up the times? I don't see times on there for those different.
Good question. Yes, we will. It, it will be from 8:00 to noon, but what it is, is that with legislators, you can't get a definite time from them, because until, we'll put that out, like I say, probably Friday, the Friday before, because they don't know what their committee schedule is going to be like that next, that next Wednesday or so. And so we don't usually get that time until a couple of days beforehand, but we'll put it out, and then get a link that you can talk to them, though.
Perfect. And then for Tuesday's schedule, if you're looking to add somebody, the gentle lady that does the state budget, I always have learned more from her at each of those
Amy Baker?
Sessions. That's her. She gives a fascinating presentation. I don't think anybody understands the state budget better than her, if she's available. That's just a thought for you.
Okay. No, I, all right. Yeah, I, no, I'm a big fan of hers and stuff, and so, yeah. Let me see what I can do then.
I appreciate it. Thank you, sir, and thanks for bringing that to us.
Amy Baker. I'll try it.
Dare I say, Roll Tide. Next is Josh Pringle.
Thank you very much, even. February 2nd's meeting of the Commission, Commissioner Kent pulled an item from the consent agenda concerning the Neighborhood Improvement Advisory Board. I appreciate your consideration, sir, in asking critical questions of what we do as a board. I am, happen to be another year as the board chairperson. I wanted to let the Commission and the community know that the next meeting and the main public service meeting for the Neighborhood Improvement Advisory Board is this Thursday, February 18th, at 6:00 PM in Room 103 here in City Hall. In previous years, the city has been allocated up to $150,000 or more from the Community Development Block Grant Program from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. We expect something in that neighborhood again this year. In my tenure on the board, we have allocated more than $750,000 to programs and capital projects here in the city. Again, we expect to be able to do that again this year. I came before you tonight for two reasons. One, to let you and the community know the meeting, and two, in recent years, there's been public interest and sometimes outrage that there isn't enough opportunity for community involvement here in Ormond Beach. I dare say, this is one of those opportunities. We are the only city board that allocates government funds here in the city, and we actively ask and look for public comment and participation in what we do. So if you or any of your constituents have ideas for what the board might be able to allocate those funds toward, please have them attend or comment prior to 6:00 PM on the 18th. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh, and happy Mardi Gras to you. We're trying to get to the point where we get our own CDBG allotment. We're not, population-wise, we're not quite there yet, so we still have to work for the county, but your board, unlike other boards, actually gets to allot some funds. I mean, it's ultimately approved by this Commission, but you have dollars that you get to assign. You have a lot of restrictions on what you can use those for, but at least you do have funding, so it makes your board interesting in, in that respect, and so hopefully, some folks will turn out and speak for that. Travis Sargent.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners and Staff. My name is Travis Sargent, 406 North Beach Street. The residents of Ormond Beach have been let down by our school board. I would like to thank Commissioner Kent, Mayor Partner Tenet, and City Manager for stepping up the efforts and trying to save Ormond Beach's only beachside school. I'm here tonight to represent the parents of school-aged children who are fighting to keep Osceola Elementary, our only beachside school. We are citizens of Volusia County who believe our voices were ignored at the Volusia County School Board. I spoke at the school board meeting last Tuesday, and basically requested a properly noticed, fair hearing to decide whether to close Osceola or Ortona. After listening to the school board's discussion last week, it became clear to me that the school board may have committed a Sunshine Law violation at its August 25th, 2020 meeting. It was clear that the board gave defective notice of the purpose of the meeting of August 25th, to be listed as a K-5 or K-8 decision, not as a decision to close a school. Furthermore, the meeting was held during a global pandemic, and any parents, citizens, teachers who may have tried to call in, gave input, had difficulty connecting, and had to go through extensive efforts to get through. The board clearly admitted improper notice and a lack of ability, lack of ability of participation in the meeting and its discussion by admitting ineffective notice and repeatedly being surprised that no parents, teachers, residents, or others had showed up to the meeting. How can you show up to something that you don't know about? To set a meeting advertised to decide one thing, K-5 or K-8, and then decide on another thing, which to close a school, which location, is bait and switch at best. The Sunshine Law allows a government board to cure a violation or alleged violation by holding an independent final action in the sunshine. This is what we as parents and residents of Ormond Beach and Volusia County are asking, a fair, properly noticed hearing on the issues. To cure the admitted confusion, very sloppy decision, and possibly Sunshine Law violation decision to close Osceola. Our intentions as a citizen group is, if necessary, to seek counsel to pursue the Sunshine Law violation in court. We are asking you, as a commission, to keep the almost $2 million in incentives you provided by resolution on the table or open and available pending the outcome of the request of the board and possibly Sunshine violation lawsuit. Also, if the board does the right thing and sets a curative meeting, we would ask you to present the resolution again and any new information regarding keeping Osceola Elementary in Ormond Beach. If anyone would like to reach out to the group, please send an email to saveosceole elementary@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. And Commission, my first thought after hearing that, I don't recall, and Randy or Joyce can help me, I don't recall the resolution having an expiration date on it. So if this Commission's intention would be, if, if we did get a fair hearing, and I, I agree with Mr. Sargent that I thought Volusia, well, Ormond Beach residents, who are Volusia residents, were treated pretty shabbily. I was there at the school board meeting, and I was disappointed in the way the school board reacted. Board Member Persis was the only member who fought for this city. The rest of the board, although admitting ineffective, improper notice, which is critically important in any sunshine consideration, but especially during a global pandemic. I just had a continuing legal education class that was put on last week by the local government law section of the Florida Bar, and they were basically saying just that, how critical notice is regarding the Sunshine Law during a pandemic. So much more heightened need to make sure that you have accurate notice and that you stick to what you're talking about. I think, you know, we are lucky to have a great city attorney, a great attorney for our board, who keeps us on track. And we've all been in meetings where we've been talking, and we start to get a little far afield, and he brings us back to say, hey, that's not on the agenda tonight. You need to stick to what was noticed and what we're talking about. I think what happened at that school board meeting back in August is they got far afield from anything that had been noticed, and they just got caught up in the moment and went ahead and, and made a decision without really giving appropriate notice. And then, you know, at the meeting last week, they're like, well, we never heard from you. Where were you? It's like, well, when you notice us properly, guess what? We will be there with bells on. When you have a notice that says closure of Osceola and consolidation with Ortona, or something similar to that, that lets people know that you're closing a school, proper, reasonable notice, then I think we'll be there. But I, I'm getting too far afield. This was stuff I was going to say in my closing comments tonight. But I guess the main question is, does this Commission, are we willing to keep those incentives open and available until the matter's resolved?
I, um...
Commissioner Selby?
Yeah, absolutely. And Mayor, if I might, I'd just like to say a couple of things. First of all, I, I did, I also watched the, not live, but it's on YouTube, the, the August 25th, I believe it is, a school board meeting where they just made this decision, and everything that Mr. Sargent said is, is very accurate. It was, the item on their agenda was, should it be a K-5 or a K-8 school, and that morphed into close Osceola and, and consolidate into the Ortona site. But the other thing I want to say is that if, if, if something is going to be done on this, it needs to be done right away, because as recently as the end of last week, I was told by one of the school board members, not, not Carl, not Mr. Persis, that the, the school board's already spent close to $1 million, mostly in preparation of the portables that, that are going to be required at the, at, at Osceola in order to accommodate the Ortona kids. So this is, if, if, if this is going to, if the, if the effort is a legal effort, it needs to get, you know, you guys got to get on it right away, and, and if we want to be part of that, you know, we need to get on that. I did, I did, the other comment I want to make is that I was surprised by some of the public reaction that I heard, you know, in the media, that how dare, you know, Ormond Beach try to buy a school. I thought that was, I'm not trying to buy a school. We're just in a position where we'd like to keep a school we have, and, and, and we have some economic resources that we want to, you know, provide to make that one of the best campuses possible in the area. So I, I don't know, those are the, kind of the two comments I had, that if we're going to, if a legal action is going to be taken on this, it needs to be done as quickly as possible, because they're spending money every day. And, and we also need to just think about that criticism that we're, you know, how to package the message about what we're actually doing and why we're doing it with the money.
Good comments. Thank you. Commissioner, Deputy Mayor Persis?
Yes, I just wanted to say, I, in my other job that I have, I, I go to
Yes, I just wanted to say, in my other job that I have, I go to schools and meet with new principals. I was actually at Ortona today, and all over the walls are renderings of the new school. There's a date already set as far as when they have to be out of there. So Commissioner Selby, you're absolutely right that if we're going to do something, we need to do it now, and we can't waste any time. And I too, I just have to say, I took offense to the comment that was made at that school board meeting. That was probably one of the most horrible things that you could say to someone. I mean, that we're trying to buy something like that. We want that beachside school because we love that beachside school. We have history with that beachside school. Parents' kids went to that school for, you know, since 1955 or whatever, whenever it was built. And for someone to say something like that, really, I really took a serious offense to it. I thought it was just very unprofessional. So I guess if, whatever we decide as the commission, we need to do it fast.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And, you know, Commissioner Kent and his family went to that school, Osceola. I went to Tamoka, so it doesn't rip my heart out the same way it probably rips him and his family's heart out. But yet, if you tried to take Tamoka away, I'd be pretty upset about, pretty upset about that. And with the Teacher of the Quarter program, seeing the amazing teaching that goes on at Osceola Elementary every single day, when we just pop in once a quarter, but there are so many wonderful things that go on there. That's why we want to keep that school. Certainly, we were accused of buying a school and, I think, being bullies, which I thought was outrageous. We were presenting information, trying to get the board to follow their own policies, and less important than what we, as the city, said, because we're just responding to our residents who asked us to help save that school, what was important was what the residents and teachers and parents who went there said. They, I thought, were the powerful speakers at that meeting. And so it was disappointing to see their voices ignored and for the school board to be so pompous. And again, Board Member Persis was the only one who fought for us, and he fought valiantly, but they had made up their mind. And Board Member Burnett is new. She wasn't there for the alleged sunshine violation back in August. And so, you know, she's just kind of getting her footing and, dare I say, wouldn't know exactly, you know, where she's at on the matter. But Board Member Cologne basically admitted the faulty notice in the middle of the meeting. Their attorney tried to clear up the record, but he was less than convincing, and they even brought that up to him in the middle of his trying to claim that everything was done correctly. And it just was kind of an embarrassment on their part, basically admitting that they messed up but not being willing to go back and fix it, when the law allows them such an easy cure. You hold a fair, impartial meeting where all sides can come and present all information, and you properly notice it so people know what's going on, and then hopefully, a good decision gets made. But they weren't willing to do that. So I don't know what legal options we have. I know a lot of times with sunshine law cases, there's an injunction requested to stop. One, because the ultimate reaction of a sunshine suit is it invalidates the board action. So they can go spend millions of dollars on portables, only to have a year and a half later, a judge say, no, this was a sunshine violation, I'm invalidating that action. So then, all that money and all that time and all that effort has been wasted. So generally, when you go in with a plaintiff's group, you ask for an injunction at that time to stop any further bleeding, if you will, until the issue can be sorted out. Then you have your depositions of all the school board members, and you get your hand on exactly what the violation is, whether it's an intentional, willful violation, whether it's an inadvertent violation. It doesn't matter, even if it's inadvertent, the law doesn't care. It cares about whether the meeting was done properly in the sunshine. So Randy, maybe at the end of the meeting in our comments, we can address this again, and you can give us any thoughts on options for us to support this parents' group. I think it's better for us to support them rather than for us to file legal action because I think it's coming from them who feel aggrieved, and they are the ones who primarily enjoy the rights of the sunshine. If we can guide them or help them any way, those are the options I'd be interested in, but it's something we can discuss further in just a little bit, if that's okay with the commission.
Yes.
All right. We'll move on now to approval of the minutes. The minutes have been sent to the commission for review, posted to the city's websites. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? There's two sets, City Commission meeting of February 2, 2021, and special meeting from February 8, 2021.
I move approval of the minutes from the commission meeting on February 2, 2021, and February 8, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, and we'll show those passing unanimously. And we are now at the consent agenda. Anyone wish to pull anything?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And does any commission member wish to comment on any of the consent agenda items?
Mayor, I'd just like to comment on item G.
Yes, sir.
National League of Cities Innovation Ecosystems Grant Funding. I spoke to Mr. Radamacher, our Economic Development Director, about this grant application. It's a program to teach entrepreneurship, you know, to help people start businesses. And I had, I think I had mentioned here at one of our meetings that, and I know I said it at the Main Street Board, that I had met with Pastor Narcisse from the New Bethel, the historic New Bethel AME Church, and he's interested in the African-American community about assisting in the creation of more minority-owned businesses. And so I've linked those two up, and I'm excited about the opportunities to, you know, help folks who want to start a business to do it the right way. And SCORE is heavily involved with this. And the good news, from speaking with Mr. Radamacher, is that this is a program that the city's going to do whether we get the grant or not, so it's not dependent upon the grant. So that's a good thing. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? We'll move to public hearings, and I'll open the public hearings. Colby, if you would, please read 8A.
Ordinance number 2021-07, an ordinance amending paragraph C of official zoning map of section 2-01, established of Article 1, Establishment of Zoning Districts and Official Zoning Map of Chapter 2, District and General Regulations of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code. By amending the official zoning map to rezone a portion of certain real property totaling .32 plus or minus acres located at 2341 West Granada Boulevard, from Volusia County A2 Rural Agriculture to Ormond Beach B2 Neighborhood Commercial, authorizing revision of official zoning map repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2021-07, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. And I'll ask Planning Director Stevens Breaker to speak on 8A.
Good evening, Steve Breaker, City of Ormond Beach Plan Director. If you recall, this is the property that went through a land use a couple meetings ago. Again, it is a small portion of the overall property. Part of the reasons we went to the general commercial land use was to get to the B2 zoning. B2 zoning does not allow residential, and it only allows neighborhood commercial, which is appropriate in this corridor. The planning board recommended approval with a 7 to 0 vote, and staff is also recommending approval.
Thank you. Steven, any questions for Steven?
Well, I have a question, but, I mean, I might as well ask it now. Can you pull up that last slide? Maybe the, well, that one's fine. Maybe one back. No, that, yeah, no, no, I'm sorry. Go back to the, one more. That one, that one. Okay. So I'm just curious, how did this, do you have any idea how the city line, that north-south line, bisects all those lots? Those are all lots, I mean, from Shawnee Trail to the east. So these people own lots that are half in the city and half in the county.
Correct. So my understanding was in the 1960s, there was an effort to basically delineate where each city, Daytona Beach and Ormond Beach, would annex to, and this line was part of those efforts. So until the city amends the land use and zoning, they maintain their county land use and zoning. So even though the land is split, they're, right now, their land use and zoning is Volusia County. So this property owner specifically requested this action, and staff did administrative.
Okay. I'm actually asking you about the lots that are north of Old Tamoka.
Right.
So, yeah, from there north, right.
Right. So these have not changed city land use and zoning?
Well, they're not entirely in the city. That's my point.
Right. So for their permitting, they're going to Volusia County.
Well, why aren't they coming to both? Because their lot is part in the county and part in the city. It's not, I'm just pointing out, I mean, when I saw this, I'm thinking like, how do you do that? How does that, how did that happen, number one? And how do they, how do they deal with that?
Right now, they're getting their permits through Volusia County. That's how they deal with it. If there's an effort for us to contact these property owners, see if they want to annex into Ormond Beach, there's no, usually annexation occurs with a connection of utilities. So there are no utility out here to connect to. So right now, they have the county land use and zoning because we haven't done the action we're doing for this parcel here. So I hear what you're saying. We were as surprised as you when the property owner came in and said, I want a city land use.
Right. Can I ask it a different way? I mean, were those lots platted in the county before the city boundary was drawn?
It could have been. I mean, it was 1960s. I don't really know what was out in this area in the 1960s. Could have just been land. I just don't have it.
Yeah, at the risk of stepping into whatever, some of these older properties are really hard to follow through the decades of time. And back in the 60s, we operated under completely different regulatory scheme for municipalities in Kansas. We were under a special legislative act. We had special zoning regulations by ordinance. It's not codified like it was, is today. And so I suspect that some of these properties, back in the day when they were under the county jurisdiction, had the land use and zoning, it just continued that way. The way the statute reads today that we operate under is, upon the annexation of property from the county into the city, the county's land use and zoning regulations, all of those land regulations, the comp plan, all of that applies to the property until such time that the city brings it in under its umbrella. It could, the statute doesn't require the city to go through this exercise of giving it a city land use and rezoning within a prescribed period of time. You know, it can be within a few months, or it can be within a few years. And a case in point is what Daytona did with the consolidated property. It was annexed in the early 2000 timeframe, and they didn't go through the comp plan process until probably mid 2000s or something like that. And so typically, what we see from the property owners is, if they annex into the city, sometimes the rezoning and the land use will follow when they want to actually develop the property. So it's very likely that this, nothing happened here because nothing was going on with the property. There's really no way for anybody to know that. But technically speaking, the property, for the lots that are in, still in the county, the property owners will go to the county for those permitting processes. Those that are in the city, they would come to the city. We've had some situations in the past where Ormonetown Square being one, where the property was in the county, went through the development approval by the county, subsequently annexed into the city. So we had to work out at a staff level who was the authority issuing the permits, how that was going to work, and be coordinated. So it can get a little interesting at times. You know, there's, we probably will never know the answer why it's taken so long for this property to come back to the city, to go through this process, other than the fact that it was just sitting there, nobody had a plan for it. So that's my best educated guess.
Thank you. Randy, and Commissioner Kent.
And Steven, just to help you out, because you said you don't know what was there in the 1960s. I don't either, because I wasn't, I wasn't here yet. But I can tell you this, in 1981, that bridge was a drawbridge. It became this bridge in 1981. In 1990, the same year that Vanilla Ice came out with Ice Ice Baby, where Lowe's currently sits, there were horses in a pasture there. I remember that as well. And Andy Romano, if he were here, would tell you that in the 50s, he could take a nap in front of Billy's Tap Room on Granada Boulevard and not worry about getting hit by a car. But to bring it even more to the point of the current day is, just next time we have Dorian Burt in the house, maybe we'll have her bring some pictures of what this strip right behind us looked like 12 years ago. It's almost unrecognizable. People forget what this area of Granada Boulevard looked like, and it was in really poor shape. It was in rough shape. And, you know, we've, through the insight and foresight of this commission and Bill Jones, it's been able to change dramatically. So I'm just trying to make you feel better by not knowing what's, what it looked like in the 1960s.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Steven? I don't have any cards, just need a motion and a second.
I move approval of ordinance number 2021-07.
Second.
Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and we will close the public hearing and move to 9A.
Ordinance number 2021-08, an ordinance amending section 5-1, definitions of Article 1 in general of chapter 5, animals and fowl, of the City of Ormond Beach Code of Ordances. By amending a definition for adequate shelter, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading for ordinance number 2021-08, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. I don't have any cards. We did get online input from Debbie Durino, and just need a motion and a second for discussion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Deputy Mayor Persis.
Yes. I am, I just want to say, I am in favor of this ordinance. I brought up the tethering law a couple of years ago, and if you look at these pictures, a couple of them are in Ormond Beach, you know, what is a so-called shelter for an animal, dog, cat, or whatever. It's just unconscionable to me that an animal might, would have to live in these conditions. So I am absolutely in favor of this. If you see the last page, the adequate shelter, that's, I mean, I'm sorry it's outside, but at least it's shelter from the cold and the rain and the wind and the elements and so forth. But I just think we need to protect our animals.
Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And 10A.
Resolution number 2021-48, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, approving a preliminary plat for Ormond Gateway, a commercial subdivision of land, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2021-48, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. And again, Planning Director Stevens Breaker.
Good evening again, Stevens Breaker. This property is located across the street from Destination Daytona, which is located right here. It would access right here, there's a traffic signal, and this is the subject property. The property actually is comprised of three different parcels and a former right-of-way, Pennsylvania Street right-of-way that was vacated. So it's a combination of several parcels, in essence, is being developed into one master plan. A preliminary plat is a technical review of the Land Development Code. The property has a B7 zoning district. It requires that each lot be at least 20,000 square feet. There are three lots proposed, you see, 1, 2, and 3. They all are far greater than that 20,000 square feet. In addition, there is common stormwater areas, natural tree preservation, the saving of two historic trees. There'll be a preservation of the Green Belt buffer, along with a common access aisle. So the subdivision really establishes the commercial uses and development. Within your packet was the actual site plan, which has the wet stormwater system here, the dry stormwater system here, the preservation of the tree, basically the natural area in and around the site, and then the common access aisle. The preliminary plat will do the infrastructure improvements, and then each site plan will come and stand on its own. If the site plan for whichever lot needs public hearing approval, either as a special exception. exception or plan development, it would come back before the commission. Otherwise, it would be approved by the Site Plan Review Committee. The planning board recommended with a 7 to 0 vote approval, and city staff is also recommending approval of the preliminary plat.
Thank you, Stephen. I have one card from the representative of the applicant who works for Zev Cohen and Associates. Are there any questions for either Stephen or the applicant? Commissioner, question?
Stephen, is the internal roads, are they going to be dedicated to the city?
No, they're private roads.
Okay.
And they're access aisles, they're not really roads.
Right.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Stephen. Just need a motion and a second.
I'll move Resolution 2021-48.
I second the motion.
Any other discussion? Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and reports, suggestions, and requests. And we start with City Manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Parks and Rec Department met with the Leisure Service Advisory Board this week to review the kickoff of the Parks and Rec Master Plan. I will have documents sent to you on Friday that will share with you that whole process, and then staff would like to meet with you individually just to make sure that you're all on the same page with that. Working forward, we would like to set for your agenda in the future, tentatively August 17th as a master planning workshop, and January 18th as, I guess, a final workshop on that. So it's about a year-long effort, and so we just want to kind of put that on your calendar for the future. The McDonald House has gotten off to a good start. AM Weigel has begun work on both the east and west faces of the building. In addition to the siding and the structural repairs, other items are being addressed with this work, including electrical service, secondary entry doors, and a new ramp to the tennis center. AM Weigel has continued to keep Ormon Beach Historical Society and the tennis center in the loop with their activities, and the work is progressing on schedule. The Willmet Pump Station, this project awarded at tonight's meeting, uses FEMA grant. You may remember back, way back when, in 2009, when we had the floods of 2009, you all took decisive action right after that happened and directed us to prepare a stormwater master plan for that area. And this is one of those projects. The money we're using is actually Hurricane Matthew FEMA money to place a permanent pump station on Laurel Creek at Willmet to allow the public work staff to help create storage in the Central Park Lakes. So this would automatically pump down the lakes in advance of a storm. They're connected by telemetry and allow additional storage in those lakes that are interconnected. As I said, prior to storm events, this project will be started and completed in advance of that. You may have noticed on North US1 that the Broadway Avenue and US1 traffic signal, that mast storm is almost, it's considered substantially complete. You all had a LAP agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation for that, to help facilitate the grant funds for that project. So we're glad to see that coming to fruition. The birthplace of Speed Park Observation Deck, that construction is complete, and the contractor is finalizing restoration. And if you've driven past South Ormon Neighborhood Center, you'll see that the fitness station is in place, and it's really getting a lot of utilization. At one time, there was a thought process that you would string out that equipment over a length of the whole park. But the new common thinking is, if you have all of it in one place, it gets higher and greater utilization, much like the project that was done at Fortunato Park with the Rotary Club and Advent Health. You've lumped all those pieces of equipment together, and it's getting great utilization. That's the only thing I have tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the City Manager? Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
No comments, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Claire. And City Attorney Randy Hayes.
No, sir, thank you.
All right, and I was going to say now might be the good time to get some options, Randy, as far as the Osceola situation and how we could best support Mr. Sargent's group moving forward.
I'll be happy to talk to Mr. Sargent and give him some, offer him some suggestions and some ideas. You know, it's hard to get too far ahead of the curve when we don't know, you know, where the curve's at really on this, other than the fact that a decision's already been made and that there is emergency, I think, for some remedial action to be taken. You know, I took a cursory review of the material that the City Manager provided to the commission a week or so ago. I mean, I've got some questions, but I don't know that we've got all of the pieces to fit together. But I'll be happy to talk to Mr. Sargent and provide as much support as we can. And then if we find a portal, that may require more formal direction from the commission, we can always come back with you and share that as well, so.
Thank you. And the, as far as attorney fees for someone prosecuting a Sunshine case, if they prevail, doesn't the government organization, aren't they required to pay those?
The government organization that has been sued, if they lose, they have to pay the plaintiff's attorney's fees. That is correct, yes, so. And of course, hard to know because we need to take a good assessment of exactly what has transpired. First thing is, I think, finding some good counsel. And, you know, we can, I'll be happy to talk to them about that.
Very good. Any other questions from the commission for Randy?
I can do it, yeah.
Good deal. Thank you. And then reports, suggestions, and requests, we start tonight with Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to thank Kevin and the rest of city staff. I gave them some unusual requests in the past couple of weeks, and they've been very helpful taking care of that. And so I did want to thank them for that. They know what I'm talking about. And tomorrow, I'll be spending my day with the Ormon Beach Fire Department, and I'll give you a report on that at our next meeting. It should be super fun. And with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Littleton, and Commissioner Selby.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just have one item to talk about. Jim Cooksey, some of you know him, he's an appraiser in town here, long been an appraiser for many, many years in town. And he, I believe with a partner, owns a piece of land that is submerged, and it's actually right out here. It adjoins Casson Park, and it's basically just to the south of our boat docks and our breakwater. And I just want to, he's now, he talked to me about this a couple of years ago, and he wasn't really in a position to do anything with it, but he's formally put it on the market. He's got it for lease. He's asking $900 a month for this piece of land, plus a percentage of sales if somebody built something there and then, you know, generated revenue off of it. He said it also is for sale, but he hasn't quoted a sale price on it. I just, I just would, I think the City Commission should seriously look at this. Because what I'm concerned about is, I don't know what the development potential of this is, but it's a fee simple piece of land that's submerged, you know, it's, and it doesn't have any road access, you know? And it, of course, doesn't have any parking because it doesn't have any road access. But somebody could come along and say, hey, this has some development potential. It's, oh, it's not zoned either. I mean, well, maybe it has some, it doesn't have any zoning, it's out in the river, right?
Special environment.
Okay, special. So, so, so I'm just thinking, putting my developer hat on, if I'm a developer, I got to come to the city, and I need zoning, I need access, I need parking, I'm adjoining a park, and I want to do a commercial, some kind of use on there and so forth. And I just see this as being something that, that that private sector person, a lot of hurdles in order to get to where they can actually monetize this piece of land. And I think Jim understands that completely, okay? But I also think that this, while the development potential may be limited, and we may not want to even try to develop it or do anything with it, you know? On the other hand, we might. There might be some really, there have been some really creative ideas when we redid the downtown master plan, you know, we were looking at the four corners and so forth. Anyway, I think it, I think it could end up being very affordable. It could be very, I don't think it would be expensive because of all the challenges to develop it. And I think it would be better to sort of get, maybe potentially get some dialogue going about that, to acquire it, not to lease it, but to acquire it. So that's just, those are just my thoughts. I just wanted to put that out there because I see that if it goes, if somebody starts trying to pursue it commercially, it could, it would, you know, it could get challenging, let's put it that way. So with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Kent.
Ms. Shanahan, we're missing a clock at the back of the...
It stopped working right before the meeting, and I tried to fix it. We'll get a new one.
I just wanted to let you, I just didn't know if you were aware...
No, I took it down because it broke.
Gotcha, thank you. Was it 5:00 PM, so I would have set it?
It actually said 12:00.
Oh, okay, so it wasn't, it wasn't someone that works here then?
No.
Gotcha. Got you. So I didn't weigh in on the Osceola thing tonight, and I'll just, I'll just say this. So there were some negative things that were said about Ormon Beach at the school board meeting and also on a local radio show by some guests that were on that show. And if there's ever, if there's any little silver lining, you know, knowledge is power, and it's powerful to know what people think of you. And sometimes they'll verbalize that, and listen to what people say about you. Sometimes you're getting an award, and you scan the room and see who's not clapping for you. That's powerful. Knowledge is power. I personally was going to tell the commission, I never liked the idea of offering the school board any money at all, and here's why. On all of our tax bills, the highest tax rate millage you're going to pay goes to the school board, then the County of Volusia, okay? Some years, it's almost twice what you would pay in city taxes. So that never excited me, was that, you know, we're going to give Ormon Beach resident money to another government agency to do their job? That rubbed me the wrong way from the get-go. But what bothered me more than committing money, because I voted for it, and I still am in agreement that we need to have it there, what bothered me more was losing our only beachside school in Ormon Beach, a decision that will negatively affect Ormon Beach families and residents of Ormon Beach and this city for 50-plus years. Not that you couldn't go to sleep not hearing why I voted for it, but that's why I voted for it. I disliked that outcome more than committing city dollars to help keep our school. Makes sense to me, anyway. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner, and Deputy Mayor Persis.
Good evening, everyone. In regard to Osceola Elementary, I just have to, I'm sorry my husband is not here tonight, but I want you all to know how hard he has worked to try to save Osceola School. It was near and dear to his heart, and he did everything he could. It, as you have heard, kind of fell on deaf ears, and I know he's still out there trying to, you know, work something out, but hopefully, Randy, if you need any information, talk to Carl because he's really got a great timeline about all the events that happen. And I do think, I do think it's just an absolute huge disappointment for the City of Ormon Beach to lose that school. If there's anything we can do, I think we need to try to, try to do it. You know, beachside, it's just another loss for our beachside, and I just think, I think it's just, you know, unacceptable. I really do, it's just unacceptable. Okay, I'm going to move on. First of all, right now, I want to talk about some good news. I drove by the Ormon Memorial Arts and Memorial Gardens today, and they're starting construction, and that is so exciting to see that. It's going to be so beautiful, I'm just thrilled. I don't know how long it's going to take, but it can't come too soon for me, so I just had to mention that, I'm just so thrilled about it. Another good news, as a former principal, teacher, educator for 39 years, I guess I'm still doing it right now, actually, but one of our own people sitting right here, Colby Celinto, has continued her education, and she is, unfortunately, but I'm very happy for her, going to be leaving us. She's going to be getting a new job, she's going to be the head of circulation, the circulation department at Stetson University, which is a huge job. She studied for it, she's gone back to school, she's still in school getting her masters right now. And I commend anybody who's working, going to school at night, working on the weekends, working at night. I really commend you for everything you're doing and you have done, and you will be successful. You're successful here, and you're going to be successful later. And I know your mother's very proud of you, and I am just beyond proud of you. So I just want to say congratulations. You will certainly be missed, but it's, it's great what you're doing, so just way to go. Really proud of you. And then I just want to thank Joyce Shanahan and Mayor Partington for everything you did for Osceola. I know you all went out of your way to go to the meetings and work together to try to, you know, try to make that work. I mean, a lot of, lot of time went into that, so I just want to thank you all for that. And with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And the art museum is looking great, it's exciting to see it start to happen, and I think you had brought up last meeting or the meeting before about the wires there on Halifax. I don't know what our options might be to either get rid of those or put them underground. I don't know what kind of wires they are, honestly. They may be power, they may be cable, but if you could look into that, Joyce, if the commission agrees, hopefully there's no cost to that, maybe they can just reroute some things or change where those run. But it does give a bad look to Halifax right there. And then Commissioner Selby, the submerged lands, I've looked at that as well with Mr. Cooksey, and it's pretty rare, is my understanding in the state of Florida, to have privately-owned submerged lands, and I believe that's in our CRA district. I don't know what could be done with that property. If the city did something and could utilize the parking, in the city parking lot, as a possibility, if it was a riverfront restaurant or something like that. I don't know how big it is or what, just what the options are, some possibilities, but, and then we would lease that, I guess, to, to an owner-operator. Those are the kind of things that there could be some potential to do that are creative, and so I'm happy to look at that. We don't really have a waterfront venue in Ormon Beach, other than Kurt's Place there, the sushi place, Fugu, thank you, that just opened up. And that's a great, beautiful place to hang out and enjoy a meal, but, so, you know, they've been talking about it for years. I don't know if it's even viable, but I'm happy to, happy to take a look at it. And if, Joyce, if it's not too much staff time to come up with some rough draft kind of options of, like, I don't even know how it's zoned, I don't know, I wouldn't know how...
Environmental, I think, excuse me.
Environmental, so it would have to be rezoned at some level if you were going to use it. I'm thinking of St. Augustine that has a restaurant that's actually out on a pier into their intercoastal waterway, but it's, it's something that's worth considering, or maybe we kick it over to Main Street and let them come up with some ideas or options of what, what they may want to see happen there, what opportunities there are there. I think you all have covered the Osceola item very well, and I look forward to hearing, Randy, what, you know, options there are. All we're trying to do is, is be treated fairly, and the decision makes very little sense when you look at each of the, each of the factors, and so that's, without a fair hearing, a chance to even have everybody show up and, and tell both sides... and tell both sides, it's hard to, hard to understand how that decision was made or even accept it. So due process is such a critical part of everything we do in government, and when it's denied, you have people who are upset and feel ignored. So we'll move forward with that. On a positive note, Sunday, I got a call from somebody who was at Cracker Barrel, and he said Michaela from our fire department was handing out fire hats and other little items to the children there, I guess, Sunday morning. And I thought, that was awesome. You don't hear all the positive things that go on in this city every single day, and so that was a, that was a great one. I don't know who Michaela is, or, I guess she was from Station 94, is, was the note that I got. But congratulations to her, and thank you for that resident to, she says, "Good morning, Mr. Mayor. I thought I would tell you that Michaela from Station 94 is in Cracker Barrel this morning handing out fire caps and other items to the children. Very nice touch." And that was the, that was the text. Also, while we're being positive, the News Journal does the 40 Under 40 Awards. It's an event that honors 40 young professionals in Volusia and Flagler Counties who are deserving of recognition for both professional achievement, as well as volunteering to make their communities a better place to live and work. And I think that banquet is going to be out at the Speedway on March 12th of this year. But our very own Jen Elston, our PIO, was nominated as a 40 Under 40 finalist, and I thought that was incredible. Jen, in her own time as well, just these last few weeks, has been helping people, seniors really, who, 65-plus, she's been helping them get appointments for COVID vaccines. People who struggle with technology, friends of friends and their parents and grandparents. Over 80 appointments that she's made so far, just by trying every single day, and I thought that was awesome as well. That just shows why that 40 Under 40 is well-deserved. So Jen, congratulations to you, and good luck with the finals. I guess there's a bunch of different categories that you can win in, but I thought that was awesome, and thank you for doing that. Joyce, thank you for letting her do that in her time to help those 65-plus folks get those, those vaccinations. And on that positive note, at 8:13, we will be adjourned. Thank you.